This session is called order. May I request the Honorable MP Saif Ibrahim Ali to lay the invocation.
Allahumma rahman, rahim. Amin ya Robl Alamin. Subhanallah ya Robl Alamin. Ar-Rahman, ar-Rahim, Maliki yam tii. Iya ta'budu wa iya ta'mustaa'in. Ihdina seratul mustaqim. Seratul dadi ma'anhamta alaihi. Gharil ma'udhu, ghalay mu'tu'allin. Amin. Allahumma feqna ya Allah, lima tuhibbatarba. Allahumma balik muradana ya Allah, ya rahmani, ya rahimni, ya arhamur rahmiin. Tama ba'alakta muradana, bi'ta Muhammadin. Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Allahumma ga'al itima'ana. Hada itima'an marhuma. Wataparruqana min ba'dihi. Taparqama assumaya Allah. Wa qina tabkun ya Hasan. Wafil a'qrota Hasan ta'wakna adabannat. Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Wa'ala adihi wasallam. Rahmatullahi.
It's been standing for the singing of the national anthem to be followed by the bangsam rohim.
Mga kababayan ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas.
Kayang magibig, keros na silangan. Alam ng puso, sani teko'y kuwai. Lu panginira, uyakan ang maheti. Savan durupi, ikapasi sinig. Sanagatang tutup sa si koyat, sanan ikaw pa'ngang. Ayunatang tulakawin, sa pagkayang ni gamaan. Angisatang matawat, kuyat ang kumpay na kene. Ang kitugin at karong yakayna, angay ni matibibi. Luhanatang araw ka'war, labit pa'ng sikha. Ue ngamit sa bibito. Ang ibigaya, napakaywa ngami. Ang pagkayang ngayusayon. Simula ang ngang ngayon, isang naging layon. Magka-isaan, magunglon, kari tingan ay baruto. Ngayon ayon, la sa hamon ang nakara. Niyabo sa paganim na uhaanla. Inagabo sa puso at paniniwala. Ang ihawang para sa kawat kau. Bangsamoro ay tagumpay, gularan pa wis suwot uhaan. Napayapan, ngatauwan, ay atin ang nagantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papalay bangsamoro. Bangsamoro, bangsamoro, lagi kang mamahalik. Walang fibigil sa damdamin, mga bagat ko'y tutuparin. Ang buhay gamis kayo'y magpangatay, mananatili sa puso't isipan. Ang kahapunggungin kay ka nagpuis ng buhay, nasapiling ka ng may kapal. Bangsamoro ay tagumpay, gularan pa wis suwot uhaan. Napayapan, ngatauwan, ay atin ang nagantang. Alhamdulillah, alhamdulillah, papalay bangsamoro.
The secretariat, the director to honor all.
The Honorable Abbas Ahmad. Abbas Haron. Abbasul Kenei. Abbas Basit Sharif. Abu Muzi. Adiyon Jawa Rahman Lalonto. Ahang Abdullah. Alamiya Liza.
Present.
Ala Unid Faiz. Ali Ibrahim. Ali Lanang Tjurgen. Ali Edi Mapag. Aliyam Sesa. Abolutos Harto. Abatuhan Bayantan. Anayatin Susana. Asmawil Muslima. Balindong Ali Pangalian. Barah Hamid Aminuddin. Basman Anna Tarhata.
Present.
Batou Muhammad Zainuddin.
Present, Hamid Barapulin.
Burahan Abraham. Dandaw May Maleha. Dandamon Latif May Sara.
Present.
Tiamla Musa. Dipatuhan Sabrula. Ibrahim Ahod. Ismail Haji Abdullah Ziz. Gayang Abdullah.
Present.
Gera Edward. Hasim Abdullah. Hassan Hatinil. Iqbal Muager. Ismail Rasul.
Present.
Jajuri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Karol Baynon. Lidasan Musolini.
Present, present po.
Loong Don Mustafa. Lorena Jose Ribani.
Dugali Srisingra.
Makapo Abdul Rauf.
Jekkakari Labar.
Makabahar Abdullah. Makaraya Janet. Makasalo Marjani. Nauda Datu Datu Kadafe. Mentawil Malik.
Present.
Mastura Datu Tokao. Mastura Siti Syaharan. Pawali Lahabim Bahag. Mitipang Datu Nitpantau. Bitbog Rasul. Mujahid Abdul Mohmin. Usain. Present, present. Orano Swaeed. Pakasam Abaidah. Pak Abdulahad. Pakantaman Nabila Margarita. Mila. Sakar Kayau. Sahri Abdul. Salenda Ansayid. Salih Alsayid. Saliga Romeo. Salik Ali. Sangki Ali. Sani Punduma. Satar Alzar. Seema Omar Yaser. Seema Romeo. Sheikh Said. Silongan Aida.
Present.
Sulaiman Ali. Tago May Salin.
Present, present.
Tan Nabil. Ulagun Lanyo. Usman Ansayid. Yakub Yakub. U.A.D. Nasyid.
Mister Speaker, perhaps may I ask the the proponent earlier has described the colors and has clearly in the report mentioned the significance of this color but I will ask the proponent, the Majority Leader in the committee on Rules who reported on the rules to reiterate the mentioning of the colors and significance.
The floor leader.
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh it is stated in section three, the colors uh used in the official logo, Mister Speaker, to the greens, the red, the red, the uh the uh the crescent, the yellow. Uh Mister Speaker, the uh use, the color used uh in the official logo of the parliament are uh same colors with the official flags, technically the the uh the basis in the colors of this uh logo is taken from the uh Bangsamoro Parliament flag. Uh this is the ready intention of the party, the committee, Mister Speaker.
Thank you, Mister Speaker.
The gentleman clarified. Um the thank you, Mister Speaker, we are now clarified that uh uh for reference purposes that the color yellow, green, and red um uh can be validated as to its technical description uh stated in Parliament Bill number seven where we define the colors of the flag. And because there are hundreds of combinations of colors, Mister Speaker, and there will be confusion later on if in this parliament we did not define the color. However, Mister Speaker, I see other colors in the logo and our uh uh computer engineers might have difficulty when there is conflict in the future how they define the other colors there, Mister Speaker. How, for example, the book is neither green, yellow, nor red, so how do we define it, Mister Speaker?
Uh Mister Speaker, the the color of the uh book is in the pictures, like in the picture is uh the logo is uh color color brown, Mister Speaker, signifying that the color of the book is brown, Mister Speaker. There is a proposal from the uh uh good MP to to define what color brown is that, uh we will be uh welcome in the uh period of amendment, Mister Speaker.
Yeah, um perhaps our technical committee can add, Mister Speaker, because the flag itself has technical descriptions uh to make sure, but then we can refer the green, red, and yellow to the flag. But uh the proponent must define at least the color brown just to make sure that there is no confusion. And even as well as the gray boundary in the in the center, Mister Speaker, there are many types of gray. So I hope that the proponent uh as we approve this logo will be able to define technically so that uh in the future they can refer to the minutes of this uh discussion to settle on the color gray and color brown, Mister Speaker.
Yes, Mister Speaker, uh well noted, Mister Speaker, we can discuss it in the period of amendment if there is a proposal from any members of the uh parliament with respect to the technical definition of the color brown and gray, Mister Speaker.
So the floor leader.
Thank you, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, I think there are no more uh members of the parliament who wants to interpellate and we can close the period of interrogation and proceed. Uh there is still one MP, may I ask that request Mister Speaker to recognize MP uh Sankey.
The honorable Sankey is uh recognized.
Thank you very much, Mister Speaker. I noticed in this uh document that the logo has some meaning, like for instance, the crescent represents the struggle for a right to self-determination.
The star represents the component provinces, cities, and geographic areas composing the barn. The crescent and star together represent the barn. And I noticed in this uh illustration that the star has seven sharp-pointed object which represent probably, as indicated there, the five provinces which is now a part of the autonomous region and there is additional two, that would mean the two cities. Then recently, Cotabato City became a part and therefore the representation of the star there being fixed at at seven may uh mean something to be corrected. What if other cities will also join, another province will join, and the logo have already fixed as the seven making it five provinces and two cities and now there are three cities? How are you going to anticipate the inclusion of other cities? Shall shall we make it a point that if there are additional provinces and cities, the seven sharp-pointed at the bottom will also have to be correspondingly be amended? What is the pleasure of the body since uh?
The decision is suspended for one minute to allow the proponent to compare notes. The show is suspended.
There is there's a suggestion, there's a suggestion that I will just make my point clear that as we go on, as the five provinces will increase as well as the cities.
Uh you can compare notes, your honor, with the proponent on the the altar.
I'm just I'm just uh making some clarification because the the star, the logo is very meaningful and that since uh it will fix the seven-pointed star meaning the five provinces and two cities, my observation is that what if other provinces will join and another city will join as it is now happening in the case of Cotabato? And there's only two star for the two cities and now we have three cities that will be part of the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region. Shall we also anticipate to increase the seven instead of seven making eight or nine or ten? How are you going to anticipate that?
Yes, the show, the show, the floor leader may.
Yes.
React to the uh statement of the honorable Sankey.
Thank you, Mister Chairman, as all legislations are dynamic. And what we call jeopardizing the law, meaning the law will be in accord to the dynamics of time and current, if there are new developments in the Bangsamoro, legislation are not fixed. Legislation even, the legislation on uh him, on everything is uh can be amended too by the by any succeeding parliaments. So there is no worry with respect to the coming in of Bali, if the entire country of the Philippines will join the Bangsamoro, then appropriate legislation can be done subsequent to the approval of this logo.
Uh the honorable Sankey uh clarified.
Mister Speaker, since there are now additional seat in the case of Cotabato, instead of seven, sharp-pointed star, why not make it eight instead of seven? Mister Mister Speaker, we'd like to clarify the question of MP Alisaki. The seven uh pointed sharp in the uh star, Mister Speaker, represents the five provinces. Yes, they represent the five provinces of the original arm, yes, and then plus Cotabato City and plus the sixty-three barangays. So that's that's the seven uh pointed crescent, Mister Speaker. So because the original arm is a five provinces, we are included two, uh one Cotabato City and uh the sixty-three barangays.
So is the honorable Sankey clarified?
I think uh my good friend, this team, uh honorable Sankey has already been, he's already clarified with respect to the pointed of the stars. So anyway, Mister Speaker, there are no more members of the parliament who manifested uh decided to interpellate, so we can close the period of interrogation and move to and open the period of amendment.
Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Uh period of amendment is now open, Mister Speaker.
We now come to the period of amendment. What is the pleasure of the honorable Saliga?
May we recognize honorable Saliga, Mister Speaker? Yes, uh I would just want to propose an amendment to include the date as I have stated a while ago, Mister Speaker, if the proponent is uh amenable.
Yes, Mister Speaker, I'm uh willing, Mister Speaker, to adopt any improvement or enhancement to the proposed bill.
With that, Mister Speaker, I move for the approval of this bill.
What what will be the amendments, Speaker?
To put in the logo the year. Can we see the?
I think that, Mister Speaker, there is a amendment also on section three to include the word barn and the year. May we request a section three?
What is the amendment? Uh the majority floor leader will please state the amendment.
Yes, to include two thousand nineteen.
Mister Speaker, the amendment as proposed by MP Saliga is to include.
Two thousand year, two thousand nineteen?
Two thousand nineteen in the logo. And but I think as clarified by the proponent, the Majority Leader, there is already, uh he it is accepted, Mister Speaker, and therefore it is just a matter of incorporating the date into the logo.
Okay, you can incorporate the date, the secretariat's attention is called.
Mister Speaker, I think there are.
There is a standing motion to approve.
Mister Speaker.
Mister Speaker, may we recognize?
Yes, Mister Speaker, um.
Please proceed.
Just to ensure the uh and to prevent confusion in the future, my amendment, Mister Speaker, is to include um either we state that uh the colors defined in the Bangsamoro flag are the ones used uh to define the color green, uh red, and yellow, Mister Speaker. I leave it up to the uh uh technical committee to how to draft that. Or we uh state specifically the the color codes that were used in the flag.
May we recognize the proponent, your honor?
Yes, Mister Speaker, I accepted any, I will accept any uh proposal on the colors defined to define the colors, particularly the book in color brown and uh gray as uh said in the committee in the uh period of interpretation anyway.
So the decision is accepted.
It is accepted already, Mister Speaker. Mister Speaker, there are no other matters, I think there are no amendments meant to be proposed as there are no other MPs who wants to propose amendment. May I close, may I move for the closure of the period of amendment, Mister Speaker?
There's a motion to close the period of amendment. There any objection? There being none, the motion is approved.
Mister Speaker.
What's the pleasure of the honorable Deputy Speaker?
Mister Speaker, I move to approve the uh proposed uh seal of the Bangsamoro Parliament on second reading, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to approve the seal of the uh Bangsamoro uh.
Yes, Mister Speaker.
On second reading.
On second reading.
Low leader.
Uh Mister Speaker, I think the motion of MP's Deputy Speaker Sema is also seconded by the and therefore uh I see no hands or an objection from the floor, Mister Speaker. So I we can proceed with the approval.
There are no more objections.
There are no more objections, your honor.
Let's proceed. Low leader.
There being uh.
Mister Speaker.
One minute to specialists.
The show is suspended for a minute.
Mister Speaker.
Second reading. Low leader.
Mister Speaker, may we move for the approval on second reading by Boba Bocce, the proposed seal of the parliament.
So. If you are in favor of uh the approval, say aye.
Aye.
If you are against, say nay. Say aye, Sabit.
Aye.
Mister Speaker, I now request the uh the position Majority Leader to our very own Majority Leaders.
Yes, Mister Speaker, considering that there is a certification issued by the Chief Minister on January eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, uh certifying this uh uh Parliament Bill number twenty-four as an urgent bill, uh Mister Speaker, I move for the uh approval of this uh bill by nominal voting, Mister Speaker.
There's a motion to approve this uh bill uh being uh certified by the Chief Minister. There any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. Low leader.
May we request the secretariat to call the roll for the nominal voting, Mister Speaker?
The secretariat is directed to call the roll for the nominal voting.
Nominal voting on DTA Parliament Bill number.
Nominal voting on DTA Parliament Bill Number Twenty-four. The Honorable Abbas Ahmed. Abbas Haron. Abbas Yurkanay. Abbas Basit Sarip. Abu Mujib. Adiyoh Jau Rahman Alontto. Ahangat Abdullah. Alamiya Laisa.
I vote yes.
Alaudin Faiz.
Yes.
Ali Ibrahim. Ali Junior Lanang. Ali Eddie Mapag. Alil Caesar. Amoloto Swarto. Ampatuwan Bayantan. Anayatin Susana. Asmaul Muslimah. Barahamid Anginodin.
Yes.
Basman Anna Tarhata.
Yes.
Bato Muhammad Tsainodin.
Yes.
Burahan Abraham.
Yes.
Kandaw Bay Maleha.
Yes.
Danda Mulatif Maisara.
Mr. Speaker, I vote yes. Uh, logos are unifying symbols. They remind us of our struggles and our dreams for ourselves, our family, and our people. As a Bangsa Moro, this day is historic one for all of us. Our collective voice signifies our unity, our cooperation to establish a government that truly pursues the political, the economic, the social, and cultural aspirations of the people in the exercise of their right to self-determination. In behalf of my co-authors and all of the members of the parliament, Happy Bangsa Moro Day, and in unity, we will have strength, Insha Allah. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi ta'ala barakatuh.
Yamla Musa. Dipatuwan Saprulla. Ibrahim Ahud. Ismail Haji Abdullah Ziz. Kayak Abdullah.
Yes.
Keira Edward.
Ami Nesarbo, Mr. Rani, Dino Saan, Financial.
Hassan Hatimil. Hashim Abdullah.
Yes.
Iqbal Wogagig, Muakhair. Ismail Rasul.
Aye.
Jaduri Raisa. Jakilan Muslimin. Karun Baynon. Lidasan Muslini. Loong Don Mustapa.
Mr. Speaker, allow me a few moments to explain my vote. My vote.
Please proceed, your honor.
In our celebration of the Bangsa Moro Day, I think many of our fellow Bangsa Moro would just think this is just another logo of a parliament of the Bangsa Moro. This is just another flag, this is just another symbolism. However, I'd like to recall a statement by my father during their time with late Hashim Salamat and Bangsa Moro Wali Khalifanando in Cairo, in the anniversary of Egypt, where all the scholars in the world were there and all the flags representing the people from all countries were there hoisted up. And unfortunately, there was no representation of the Bangsa Moro people, and they cried. And that is what they earned, a representation of their identity, of us as a unique peoples in this part of the world. And with this Bangsa Moro Parliament, a logo that represents legislative and executive powers vested in a Bangsa Moro people that have struggled for 500 years, I am very happy that their dream is now a reality. With that, I vote yes.
Vote yes.
Lorena Jose Ribani.
May I be allowed to explain my vote? Mr. Speaker, I vote yes. As the approval of the logo is that just a matter of symbol. It reflects that under eleven zero five four, the Bangsa Moro transition authority and subsequently the parliament is the governing body. Therefore, executive and legislative power emanates from the parliament. It is the parliament of the people and therefore due respect and courtesy, not only to the seal and the logo, but to the parliament and the parliament members as we ordered there too. Having said that, I vote yes for the approval of it.
Please proceed.
Makako Arturauf. Makka Paar Abdullah. Makaraya Zabir. Makasalong Marjani.
Ang problema nikman kayan.
Manguda Datu Datu Kadafe.
Yes, my vote is yes, Mr. Speaker.
Mantawil Malik.
Yes.
Mastura Datu Tokau. Mastura City Syahara.
Yes.
Mawalil Amil Bahar.
Mr. Speaker, just a very short manifestation. Uh, Mr. Speaker, at the onset, allow me to greet everyone, uh, happy founding anniversary, happy new year too. Um, uh, the Bangsa Moro struggle needs to be retold, recast until our last breath. So my vote is yes, Mr. Speaker, thank you.
Thank you, the vote is yes.
Mit Timbang Gato Midbantau. Mitbog Rasul. Mujahid Abdul Muhammin.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, my vote is yes, my yes.
Bunios Hussein. Orano Swae. Pakasa Rabaidah. Pak Abdullah Hab. Pangandaman Nabila Margarita.
Yes.
Ramos Nabila.
Assalamualaikum, Mrs. Speaker, may I be allowed to explain my vote?
Please, do so, honor.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I vote yes. The passage of this deal is timely as we celebrate Bangsa Moro Foundation Day. It is a historical milestone and a symbol of this government. Particularly this parliament, which is a new system, is something we should always be proud of as it promotes. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed.
Rimbang Edrisa Nasir. Sakar Modayaw. Sahrein Abdul. Salida Said. Sally Alshig. Saliga Romeo. Saling Ali. Sankey Ali.
What is the pleasure of the honorable...
My vote is yes to the logo, subject to that observation that I have made. And I think it was clearly understood that should there be additional cities and provinces, the star within that logo will correspondingly be adjusted. That is clearly understood, thank you very much.
Sunny Putuma. Satar Alzad. Semah Omar Yeser. Semah Romeo. Sheikh Said.
Yes.
Silongan Aida. Tago Paisali.
Yes, my yes.
Anna Bill.
My vote is yes, Mr. Speaker.
Uja Sahi. Ulama Meladio. Usman Aspar. Yakob Muhammad.
Mr. Speaker, my vote is yes.
Uek Narciso.
Mr. Speaker, we have now the result of the voting on the Bill Number Twenty-four. Mr. Speaker, we have a total number of votes, yes votes, forty-nine, with no, uh, zero no votes and zero abstained votes. So therefore, Mr. Speaker, the yes vote habit. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
With forty-five members voting yes. Uh, forty-nine, forty-nine. Yes, voting yes, no zero, with no abstention. Uh, Bill, Parliament Bill Number Twenty-four is hereby approved. The majority floor leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, we are now on the other matters, Mr. Speaker. We'd like to announce in this august body the nomination of two additional officers. May we request the minority black to point also. Uh, the deputy minority, deputy speaker, additional deputy speaker for Zia Joe. And additional assistant majority floor leader in the person of MP Paisali Tago, Mr. Speaker. May we request the minority to have...
What is the pleasure of the honorable Deputy Speaker Sema?
Mr. Speaker, uh, it is our, uh, belief that the deputy speakership should also be balanced, Mr. Speaker. There are now two, there is now one from the islands in the person of the senior deputy speaker, Hatimil Hassan, and another nominee for the, uh, for the mainland MP Zia Adyong. We would like also to nominate another deputy speaker for the islands in the person of MP Nabiltan, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Mr. Speaker.
So, uh, this motion to elect two additional deputy speakers in the person of honorable Zia Or Rahman Alontto Adyo and honorable Nabiltan. Is there any objection? There being none. Zia Or Rahman Alontto Adyo and Nabiltan are elected as deputy speaker. Low Leader?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, I also move for the, to elect MP Paisali Tago as additional or assistant majority floor leader, Mr. Speaker.
This for the majority, deputy majority floor leader?
Yes, additional deputy.
There's another nomination for an additional deputy majority floor leader in person of attorney Paisali Tago. Is there any objection? There being none, the motion is approved. The gentlemen are requested to take their oath in the next session of the parliament, since they are elected in...
Yes, may we recognize the minority black, Mr. Speaker?
What is the pleasure of the honorable, uh, minority assistant deputy minority floor leader?
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the minority, we elect honorable Member of Parliament Bayantan Ampatuwan as the deputy minority floor leader for the minority.
There's another nomination for deputy minority floor leader in the person of MP Bayantan Adi Lampatuwan. There any objection? There being none, motion is approved. The honorable Bayadil Lampatuwan is elected as deputy minority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, just a quick manifestation, Mr. Speaker. I would like to put a motion that these changes in the, uh, in the in the positions of the officers of the parliament be integrated in the parliamentary rules of the Bangsa Moro Parliament. Yes, Mr. Speaker, well noted, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I think there is no need to reflect anymore the positions that we have elected in the rules because we are following traditions of similar jurisdictions like the House of Representatives and the Senate wherein they did their...
I will object into the proportion of MP Mawari. But anyway, Mr. Speaker, we can discuss that in the Committee on Rules meeting proper, Mr. Speaker.
We will discuss, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, just a quick manifestation. I remember...
Well, your manifestation is noted.
A response to that.
This is purely an administrative matter, your honor, which is the practice in all legislatures, not only here, but in other countries. Anyway, majority floor leader?
Yes, we will discuss that in the Committee on Rules. Mr. Speaker, I yield to the Mr. of the Leadership, thank you, Mr. Speaker.
The honorable you, Lorena?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. While the majority leader manifested that it can be discussed in the Committee on Rules, but my manifestation is I go along with the statement of the good speaker that it has become a parliamentary practice, even in legislative bodies in a unitary system, that additional officer, that it may not be reflected in the rules that additional officers may be elected for purposes of the operationalization and effective management of the legislative body as a part of the administrative body, as part of the administrative...
As a part of the administrative body, as part of the administrative process, the legislative body or the parliament can elect additional officers. So there is no necessity, need to replicate in the rules. Thank you, this is a manifestation, Mr. Speaker.
Anyway, that is a matter of judicial notice. Your leader?
Yes, there being no other intent and order, Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn this session until the next regular session.
This show is adjourned to resume to resume January twenty-sixth. January twenty-sixth. This show is adjourned.